I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's start our meeting this evening with the Fledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our world.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Villasenor?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garola?
Here.
Mayor Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Mayor, may I remind you about the attendance?
Right, yeah, I was just gonna make that announcement. So, for those of you who weren't aware, Councilmember Christina Villasenor is participating. She's out of town, but she's participating via teleconference right now, and you may have heard her just say "here." So, we'll hear her voice, but we won't see her this evening. So, she is participating. So, moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. And before we approve that, I just want to make a note that we are going to pull item 9D from the agenda because we'll bring it back next meeting. And the reason for that is we want to add additional documentation to that, just for supporting documentation. So, that takes us to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda?
Yes, corrected. Yes, amended.
As amended.
Second?
As amended.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Okay, moving on to item number five, our presentations. And our first presentation is the Firefighter of the Year Award. And for our Fire Chief Garola, we'll let you do the award presentation here and proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and especially the public. It's my honor up here to introduce to everyone our 2023 Firefighter of the Year. Before we introduce the individual, a little bit about the process. So, the firefighter of the year is nominated and voted upon the peers, all the firefighters there, all the captains through reserve firefighters, all the ranks are eligible. There's, at this time, we, between full-time permanent firefighters and reserves, we have a total just under thirty, somewhere in there. So, there's a lot of nominations. We have a great firefighting corps, a great group of individuals. They all, in reality, could win this on their own. So, the individuals that are nominated and get the most votes are those who really go up and above more than what the normal firefighters do. And again, I'm, all our normal firefighters go up and above. You see them out there, all the emergency scenes that they work on, all of the public education programs that they do and so forth. So, they're all out there. So, but the individual tonight, I'll bring him up here, he can stand alongside me and turn red. So, our firefighter of the year for 2023 is Acting Fire Captain Salvador Abara. Sal? So, I don't know where you want to turn red in front of the council or the public or, actually, the public's got you on every camera angle, so they'll catch you. So, it's my honor again to bring Sal up. Sal's got a pretty lengthy career with Fillmore Fire Department. He started in 2014 as a reserve. He worked his way on up to be certified as an engineer. After engineer certification, he worked his way on up to become captain certified as a reserve. Sal was able to make himself available on the promotional list as a, as an engineer. He was hired full-time as one of our engineers in 2022. I believe I have the numbers straight. I have his bio here, but it's so long, I'm only gonna paraphrase all of it, so. So, anyway, so Sal, as a reserve firefighter, he definitely believed in education. He got his AS in fire tech at Oxford College, I believe. That didn't stop him. Very well educated. I'm gonna talk about Sal, what got him this point, and then I'll talk a little bit about him, where he's going. So, Sal, as a reserve firefighter, not a full-time, recognized that we needed help in our arson division. We started an arson division a few years back, probably six or seven years ago. Ron Ramirez, Ron Ramirez is a retiree fire captain from Ventura City. He was kind enough to come in with us as a battalion chief, reserve battalion chief a few years back, and start our arson program. It's, it's not cheap, it's costly. A lot of time spent in classroom and in field investigations. We had a couple of our full-time guys that we supported on that. Sal, as a reserve, went on his own dime, his own time, and received the same education. He was that motivated to, to see the void that we had and worked on his own. So, that was appreciated. So, Sal is now one of our senior investigators. Not only that, but Sal also recognized that as a fire department, we have our own internal certification process, and, and we're proud that it meets or exceeds the state standard. But Sal went out and as an engineer, on his own dime again, his own time, he went out and went through all the CAL FIRE state testing for engineer. And he was able to succeed and highly succeed in that, and now he's one of our educators for that. Matter of fact, Sal put on the last Engineers Academy, and where we qualified, I think, four to six new engineers. So, great job on that. I'm gonna have to look at your bio now for the rest of the stuff you've done. Over the years, Sal has, he's got the passion, he's got the right attitude to be here at Fillmore. It's just not a job, it's not just even a career, it's a lifestyle for Sal. He's got a family of, his wife Sonia's here and his two boys, and they have another firefighter on the way, the boy coming, I'm sorry, it could be a girl, could be a girl, yeah. So, he's got another firefighter coming, and so, you know, he's, he's part of the community. He's got a leg hold here that, he's got a legacy, you know, his family's, his brothers and sisters are here, and his mom is here, obviously, and definitely part of the community. Where I'm going with this is that he's got the mental aspect of being that firefighter who gives back to the community. Sal is one of our inaugural critical incident stress management peers. So, he's recognized by our department and, and the coalition within the county that he's available to help out with a lot of mental stress that occurs in the firefighting and all the first responder positions. So, he does come with us from AMR ambulance as a paramedic, spent many years with them while as a reserve for us. So, he comes, again, highly educated, highly skilled, and now, let's talk about where he's going. Education is, is the key for all of us to stay safe in our careers. There's, it's changing so much. There's, there's so much new dangers, hazards that are out there, but also just the administrative part of it. And Sal has, has been working on the administrative part of it. He just recently received a bachelor's in, I believe, fire management, fire executive management?
Fire administration.
Fire administration. So, he's working on that, and he started his master's program now for, for fire administration and, and public administration. So, he's, he's got great aspirations, he's got that educational part. Sal, I'm skipping around here, but as my mind goes, Sal, again, has a community in mind. He, we had a community children's safe house trailer. It was purchased many, many years ago and had kind of fallen out of repair. We were able, through some donations, the Fire, Fire Foundation was able to put some money into it, and we revamped that with Sal's help. So, now we've got the community kids' trailer up and running again. Sal's taken the lead on that. Excuse me. He's, again, he's just, I think one of the biggest things for me right now is because of the limited staff, administrative staff, the captains, Mike Salazar's back here, Sal, they've taken on a lot of the grant work that we've done. We've received probably, for the last ten years, well over a million dollars in grants, and some of our paperwork has not been the best. And, and now I've got the two captains here, again, Sal being one of it, that are really taking that over, and now we're able to get caught up on our paperwork and go forward. So, again, I know it's supposed to be quick. With that in mind, Sal, thank you for all that you've done. He's our training captain now, leading seventeen recruits to become full-fledged firefighters with us, and I think for me, that's probably the biggest accomplishment, because you're taking care of those next generational leaders coming up. So, Sal, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sal was already recognized by his peers, and we had a little ceremony back in February. So, he, we do have, have a plaque for him that he received, and now he's, now you're official.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Part of your leadership training.
Just want to take, first and foremost, thank you to the city of Fillmore, as a recognition, but also to my members at the fire department. I wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for them. I'm just doing my job. The one thing Captain Salazar and Captain Gabriel once told me as a leader is, you take care of your members first, and they'll take care of you. So, that's been a big inspiration to myself, from him and Captain Gabriel, as basically my role models throughout the last past ten years. And then, the last person that I couldn't do this without is my wife. I thank you for holding down the fort for whenever I'm gone from five to ten days. So, thank you so much for what I'm able to do without you. Other than that, thank you, and I hope to continue to do what I'm doing. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Now, we move on to item.
Do you mind if I just make a quick comment?
Feel free.
I just wanted to thank all of our firefighters. I saw a great example, and I see them all over town all the time, but in particular, this past Sunday, I think they were setting up for a little training exercise at the park while another group had booked one of the sites, and they didn't want to crowd them, so they had just finished setting up, and then, just as quickly as they had set up, they tore everything down to go to a new location, so they didn't disturb what was going on there. And I can only think that Sal's example is excellent for, for all those guys, especially having to move, you know, I don't know how frustrating that can be when you get all set up to do something, and then you gotta just pick up and move somewhere else. So, I will say that if God ever finds me on the side of the road and you have assistance, I hope it's Sal there with a big old smile trying to save my life, because at least I know I'll go in peace. So, thanks, Sal, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Sal, congratulations, and thank you for all you do for our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something?
Of course, Christina.
Oh, great, thank you. I also just wanted to ditto these comments, my fellow councilmembers, and really emphasize, Sal, thank you for continuing your education, for pursuing your bachelor's and then your masters. You know, that wealth of knowledge that you're bringing to the job, you're bringing to the community as well, and it's just making our community that much more safe and, and the whole fire department that much more knowledgeable. So, just really appreciate that extra effort of pursuing those, continuing your education. It's great, thank you.
Great, anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to our second presentation, 5B, Public Works, Parking Enforcement and Compliance. I'm gonna turn this over to staff.
This could be hard to follow.
Georgie, we have some people that are exiting. You want to withhold off just for a minute if it's disrupting at all?
That's fine, I can wait.
Okay.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of Fillmore. My name is Georgie Harado, I'm the Executive Assistant for the Public Works Department. Today, I'm going to be giving a quick presentation to educate the community on an upcoming procedure and the city's approach, so thank you for having me.
Great.
I'll start by saying the reason we give these types of presentations, to keep the Fillmore spirit positive and reassure the community that we're doing our best to keep the city safe, clean, and maintained. So, we'll go through a few slides here today. It's the Public Works Department's responsibility to maintain all city-owned trees and maintain and keep clean all city-owned streets. So, when vehicles don't comply with our no parking signage and rules, it costs the city extra money to have to reschedule for tree maintenance. If tree maintenance doesn't get done on time, branches can fall on vehicles, pedestrians can obstruct vision. In regards to street sweeping, when vehicles don't follow the rules, our streets don't get fully swept, that not only leaves trash and debris in the streets, but that could lead to greater issues like damage to our storm trains. So, the overall goal here is to keep the public safe, keep our city clean, and be fiscally responsible. I guess the main announcement today is the city of Fillmore, in conjunction with the Police Department, will be moving towards enforcing the towing of vehicles not complying with no parking signs for street sweeping, tree maintenance, construction, and any other maintenance-related work. So, what to look for when parking on public streets? Temporary no parking signage will be cardboard signs posted on delineators, they'll be in parking stalls, on sidewalks, on trees that are gonna be trimmed. Signs will be posted seventy-two hours prior to the work. No parking signs will also be posted in construction and maintenance work areas. For example, we have the AMI smart meters coming soon, so that contractor will be using those no parking signs as well, so sort of a heads up. And obviously, during emergencies, some areas will be closed without seventy-two hour notice, it's kind of the, the way Public Works is, just get on top of those emergencies. Street sweeping signage will be permanent signage that'll be posted in residential streets, that will include weekdays and times when to refrain from designated no parking areas. That will commence at a later time. Until then, you can refer to our city website to see the map with the color-coordinated legend to see where to not park during what days. The reason it's gonna take some time, just because it's a complex project, it's gonna take a lot of prep time, a lot of actual hours of labor, so it's gonna take some time to get, to get there. This is what the temporary no parking signs look like, they'll have dates and times of when to not park in that area. So, the Public Works Department will be working with the city's Police Department to coordinate and enforce towing of vehicles not complying with the posted signage. Now, the city nor the Police Department want to tow vehicles, so they're gonna take an educational approach and start by running registrations, knocking on doors, handing out citations on, on vehicles if it's not urgent to, to move it right away. Ultimately, if, if we have to, it will be towed, but that'll sort of be the last result. So, if that last result happens to you, the step to recover your vehicle is, one, go to the city's Police Department to obtain a release form. Police Department's located at 524 Chesapeake Avenue. Only the registered vehicle owner with a valid driver's license can obtain the release form. The administrative fee is an $111. And then, at that point, the Police Department will let you know at which tow yard your vehicle's stored at. Once you go to the tow yard, they'll have a vehicle pickup fee of $310. They also have a daily storage fee of $75 to $85. So, depending on how long you take to pick up your vehicle, they can add up pretty quick. So, the average cost of recovering your vehicle is $421. Again, that'll vary, doesn't include any storage fees, that same day you pick up your car, 420 bucks. So, we appreciate all the residents' cooperation and understanding. Let's work together to keep our city clean and safe. This is the end of my presentation, I'm open to any questions.
Questions, comments? Well, I certainly appreciate this presentation. I know I get questioned quite frequently from constituents on, you know, when is my street gonna be cleaned and whatnot, but I like the idea, especially of putting up permanent signs for the, the street cleaning, the street sweeping. I think that's great. So, I thank you so much for your presentation and look forward to it moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Georgie.
Mayor, I do have a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Georgie, I'm sorry if I just missed, was, when does this go into effect?
Well, educating the public will start now, immediately. As far as the actual towing, we're thinking maybe August, September, once people get a little more acclimated to what's going on, I'm sure we can post some stuff on social media just to keep it, you know, alive and keep reminding people that this is coming.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Move on to public comments, and I do have, I believe, three public comments. And this is a point in time when the public is encouraged and welcome to address counsel on anything that's not on the agenda. If you want to talk about something on the agenda, then one of these green-yellow forms should be completed noting the agenda item. But with that said, I have four, just speaking during public comment, and we will start with Norma Amaro.
I get nervous, how come I'm always the first one? Okay, hello, Mayor and everyone. Okay, my name is Norma Amaro, and the reason I'm here is twenty-something years ago, I was in a business across the street from where I'm at now, and at that time, we came to the council and we got a very large billboard sign out on the highway. It made a difference. We started getting people into Central that didn't even know Central existed, and it went good for a while. But as the years passed and decades, and now over twenty years, this billboard sign is not only very outdated, it's torn apart, it's a mess. I've talked to many merchants on Central. A lot of them are closing early or they're not opening every day. Why? Because of lack of foot traffic, excuse me. It's costing us more to stay open sometimes than to open. So, we're asking, I don't know how the general fund works, I don't know how the money gets there or how it's used, but what's really important, if there's any way we can put up a new billboard sign out on the highway, I've talked to several of the merchants, and if it says something like "historical downtown" with a big arrow pointing downtown, no specific street, just an arrow, and it would have like, it would say antique gift shops, restaurants, historical museum, the City Hall venue part, just things that were, sometimes we get customers that have never been here before, but they travel the 126, not for one, two, three years, I'm talking decades, they're going to Ventura, go, why haven't you ever turned in here before? They tell me that the store that closed down on the highway, the corner, they go, it's not there anymore, so we just turned to see what else there was. So, there are thousands of commuters that go by that aren't even aware that we're here. So, if there's any way we could please put up some kind of a billboard sign that lets people know Fillmore is alive, we want it to stay that way. I don't want us to become a little ghost town, like a lot of the little towns that the stores are starting to shut down completely, and it, it's not good. So, I'm asking if there's anything we can do, it would be wonderful if we could get a large billboard sign, again, that just shows people, we're here. I don't want Central to close down, I really don't. I think I'm gonna outlive everybody here, I'm gonna be here forever, but my kids and many, I think there's six or seven generations of my family here, and a lot of us plan to stay, and I want Fillmore to continue to be what Fillmore is, but now that we don't have the train anymore, and after COVID hit us, it's been pretty hard for everybody. Some of them keep saying they might close, they might not, they're not sure. I don't want it to close. So, I'm asking, please, if there's any way we can do some kind of a billboard sign, I'll help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. You're welcome.
Just as a short response, we have been briefed on, I think it was what we called wayfinding signage as part of a kind of an advertisement strategy. We're actually meeting with that consultant sometime next week, so I'll definitely plan to bring it up with the consultant as a potential actionable item, kind of an updating of easy-to-find signage and foot traffic and vehicle traffic kind of ideas.
Thank you.
Can I pipe in real quick, too? I think years ago, we were, we were looking at that, and there was issues with the CAL TRANs encroachment permits, wasn't there, Dave? I meant when we were, we were exploring this option years ago.
For that particular issue, was some signage correct? Otherwise, we take a look at the billboard I talked about.
It was CAL TRANs encroachment permits.
And we'll look at the billboard she's talking about, take a look at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Lauren Vigil.
Hi there, and thank you for your time. My name is Lauren Vigil, and I'm the owner of The Vintage Nest on Central Avenue, 324 Central. I've been a shop owner here for a year now, and my concern is that we don't have an updated sign. My customers, my customers have said to me many times, I drove right by Central, not even knowing that this was Central Avenue, when they're trying to find me. I've had two other shops, in one in Moore Park, one in Santa Paula, and so I have a little bit of a following. And that being said, when they come to, come to Fillmore, they drive right by, and I get a phone call, "Where's Central? What do you mean, go past the tracks? It doesn't look like anything's down there." So, it really is a hinder for business. Norma and myself and other people there, we've put our money into these businesses, and to not have a sign as a direction as to how to get to us is really disheartening. We do need a clearer and a bigger sign. I, I understand from Kevin that, in fact, we do have a committee that is working to revamp downtown. Fillmore, apparently, they've been working on a year, you know, how much longer does it take? People are gonna start closing the doors because the revenue's not down there. And I do understand the process, but I would hope that if, I also know that we've allotted them a lot of money to do this survey that we needed to do, you should have just came to us, we could have told you what we needed, instead of spending all these thousands of dollars on a survey. We'll tell you, because we're there, we need a sign to get to us. And I'm sure that there's some kind of paperwork, and I'm sure there's some way that will make this not be as soon as we want, but I'm asking you just to cut through the red tape. Whether you do it now or whether you do it when it's over, we're still gonna need the same sign. So, again, with Norma, if there's anything we can do, we'll be happy to do it. You know, we've put a lot of money into our shops, and we need to be seen from 126. We, we took a gamble with Fillmore to do it, and we would like to be recognized, in a sense, just to put up a sign as to how to get to us. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Yvonne Becerra.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Becerra, the Branch Manager at the Fillmore Library, also on Central, so that's a wonderful, wonderful place to be. I was appointed Branch Manager this last February. I've been with the library system for over twenty years, but I'm now here in Fillmore and so excited about it. So, I just wanted to introduce myself, and I did write notes, because I, otherwise, I would just keep on talking and forget what I came for. So, I just want to let you know that at the Fillmore Library, of course, you're aware that we had our wonderful expansion, and since then, the staff has also expanded, so our services just keep growing and getting stronger. The community's just wonderful that, that come in, the students are amazing, they leave all their notes on the wall of their calculus and everything, they've been studying all day, and we just go in and, you know, decipher what these amazing students have been doing. It's just wonderful, so I just wanted to share that with you. So I just wanted to share that with you. What we have recently implemented are express hours. Express hours are, let me see, how do I say? They're two hours prior to official opening daily, where customers can obtain self-service access, including use of computers, printing, material selection, checkout, and hold's pickup. That's before the library opens, they update their library card, and it allows them to swipe, come in, get what they need, and maybe study a little bit, and then go. If they need additional services, then, you know, we will be there during regular open hours. I want to announce that because it's pretty exciting, so all of you could update your library cards to have express. If you don't have a library card, come on in and visit us, and we'll get you all set up. So I just wanted to introduce myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you. Any library questions? All right, do you know where to find us? Come on down, okay?
Thank you. Okay, and the last of our public speakers, public comments, is Brandy Hollis.
Good afternoon, council members. Congratulations, Keith, on having a great staff. I just wanted to come in and, once again, let you guys know the organization I work with that came out, and you met with Carrie, and we spoke about briefly, Conejo Health. I've brought it up here several times. I have now officially onboarded with Conejo Health. We were awarded a sizable grant, and that is going to be centralized in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Pai Bhuu. Our focus is on the 12 to 26 age range. We're gonna, it's for substance abuse disorders. We are gonna really, really focus on education, prevention, and early intervention. You know, I've been fighting this mission on, like, how do we stop this problem that we're going with and maybe gain ahead of it is the first step. I know that we're gonna be working hard. We are the only organization that is based solely in Ventura County to be awarded this grant directly from the Department of Healthcare Services. It's the Elevate Youth Program. It's a Proposition 64 grant, funding right back into our kids in education and prevention. So I know these days I've been talking their ear off at school board meetings and been really involved, but it's happening. The award has already been awarded. We have like a couple pennies to switch around on our budget, but once the ink dries on all the contracts, there will be a press release. And it's really big for our kids because no one else in this county is doing this. So we're gonna be one step ahead here, and that's amazing. And, you know, I really want to make sure that we work with other organizations within the community, including our school districts, law enforcement. I've talked to the Boys and Girls Club, you know, talking with Jan. I do have stipends for people in that age range from, you know, 18 to 26 who maybe have gone down this. And the biggest thing is to break the stigma, right? Substance abuse happens, but we can develop healthier behaviors through leadership. And I think that's the biggest goal, is to turn around, is we're not gonna make these choices maybe our families have made and our friends' families, and kind of break the stigma, break the chains, which will be the name of it. And, or is the name of it, sorry. But to break those familiar patterns, so that way our kids don't end up in the river bottom. And eventually, the same people that were able to help me get the grant going can now in turn our resources in the emergency room. So somebody's mom goes to, you know, has an overdose, and now, hey, it's okay, maybe my mom went to this facility, and it's okay to talk about. But we're really, really gonna focus on the healthy behaviors, not so much the substance and what we're gonna do different. So I just wanted to formally announce that. I've been talking about it quite a bit, and we're not gonna stop there. We have other grants in progress. I'm hoping to bring in a suicide prevention through the Department of Healthcare Services as well, and just keep building, and this is just the first block. So I wanted to let you know, I've been coming here talking for a year, but we're going somewhere, and we have the funding to back us up. A few of you, I've emailed my new email address to, it's brandy@conejohealth.com. I'm sure Carrie's met with a few of them when they've come out. Really great people, they care about our community, too. So if you guys have any questions, you would like any presentation, I'll have additional literature, there'll be a press release shortly, and if there's anything I can do to be of service, let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, that concludes our public comments session, and we move on to item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. So turn this over to Council. Anything to report?
Mayor, I do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Everyone still hear me well?
We do.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, so first comment, and actually, it's a follow-up to Brandy speaking, it's a reminder that on May 18th, which is less than a month away now, it's a Saturday, we're gonna have sort of a day of health and wellness in Fillmore, starting with the Rotary Club's 5K, 10K, and 1K fundraiser. And that is gonna start in front of the fire station. So welcome to sort of contact the city through me, just requesting me to give you more information on that. There should be some lawn signs going out around the community about the 5K, 10K. Following that, once that finishes, at 10:00 AM, just down the block, right in front of the Fillmore Unified School District building on the front lawn, we'll have a Health and Wellness Resource Fair. That's sponsored by the city as well as the school district. And we have a whole bunch of different booths, so that's going back to Brandy's organization, Conejo Health. Brandy, I'll forward you the vendor invitation, you know, to hopefully get this organization there and spreading information about what you're doing in the community, because it sounds fantastic and it runs right in line with promoting health and wellness to our residents. So thank you for that. So that was one. And the second is about another event that's happening and hopefully coming to Fillmore and sort of, I want to put it on the radar for council and something for us to consider supporting, and I hope we do. There is something that happens every four years usually, it's been happening since the 1990s, and it's called, it hasn't happened for eight years because of COVID. It's called the Peace and Dignity Journey, and it is a 7,000-mile run, six months, and it basically promotes indigenous awareness about indigenous communities of the Americas. And it's really pretty awesome. Sorry, I have my cell phone right now. It is, there is a group of Native American runners, a small group, that start at the tip of Alaska, another small group that starts at the tip of Argentina, and it's sort of a spiritual ceremonial run. And the two groups go through different communities, they rest, they spend the night, different communities go on, keep running, and they meet halfway in Colombia. And it's just sort of just, it's a really amazing show of unity amongst the native population. And it's something that, again, that happens through different cities, just so happens that on the route this year, they will be coming through the central coast of California, and they will be hopefully making a stop in Fillmore. So I want to put on our radar, if we had a future agenda item, there has been a request from, to have an overnight stay in our Active Adult Center, which is our, sort of our one public space that we have available to us right now. Where they would come in on a middle of July on a Sunday afternoon, spend the night, small, like I said, like a dozen runners or so, and then, you know, have sort of like a, probably a welcoming ceremony the next day, have breakfast, and have a departing ceremony. So anyhow, just wanted to see if we can support this real international goodwill, and it'd be just a wonderful thing to support, you know, learning about native culture, learning about, you know, what's happening, you know, I guess, in our modern times, in the native communities across the Americas. It is a great educational opportunity. So wanted to put that on a future agenda if I can get support.
Christina, yeah, we do have the support. I had met with our city manager, discussed it with him yesterday, and it will come up on one of the, what, did we decide on an agenda?
What's gonna, what's gonna take place is, I understand, they're gonna make a request and weigh some fees. I cannot do that. So the request is received, I will bring that back for city council discussion and consideration at that point in time.
At that point, right.
Can we get some information on it first?
Yeah.
Is there anywhere we can look up what?
Yeah, I Googled it.
Okay.
But Christina may have.
There's a website, and there's a letter that should be coming from the organizers. Every, as the run goes through different communities, different groups who are supporting the runners, and in our area, it's the Central Coast, you know, Indigenous Community Organizing Committee, Planning Committee for this run. So they're gonna send out a letter to city manager, and I'll have him CC the council members, just all the who, what, when, where, link to their website, what they're doing, and all the details. Okay? Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements?
Okay. Sorry, I thought you meant in response to that. I was just gonna make one comment and maybe a request. This particular agenda had a ton of information in it, and a lot of, I'm sure, really hard work that went behind producing the agenda. It came out on a Friday, kind of late. It puts a bit of a stress not only on us as council to review all the documents, but then also to the public. We did meet our minimum posting times, except for one item, but I just kind of wanted to see if the council would consider maybe just kind of have like a minimum timeline, maybe for like every 100 pages of documents that we're gonna review, to consider, you know, backing that up a little bit and/or just, you know, if we exceed the minimum 72-hour posting requirement at maybe like 300 pages. This is one. We have had particular agendas in the past with over 1,000 pages.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out, where is it coming from?
Nope, yeah, this particular agenda, yeah, this particular agenda. So maybe to establish a rule to have, you know, anything exceeding 300 pages or so to require an additional day posting in advance, so that, not just so that we have more time to review, but so that we more accurately review all the information leading up to the agenda. And/or it would then just cause any additional items to slip to the next meeting or something, so that we, again...
Have sufficient time.
Have sufficient time, not just for us to review, but for the public to review as well.
What's your call on that, Tiffany?
I mean, I don't think there's a legal issue, it's a policy decision. Like, council, I just know that staff usually doesn't know how many pages of attachments different items are going to be. So, and I think their goal is always to get it out on Thursday, but then sometimes things run late. And especially since this one was so long and everyone had so many agenda items, that's why it ended up a little later than usual.
Some of the pages were just halfway copies of maps and, I meant...
Yeah, not complete pages that you had to really study.
Throwaway that you couldn't even read anyway.
Yeah. I mean, we can try to do that, but some of it has to go at certain times, like tonight with like the initiation of the levy, and then there's like so much timing of the notice for the setting the hearing and things. So logistically, that would just be really hard.
Yeah, I don't want to put any undue stress or extra work on behalf of the staff. I know they work diligently and really hard getting these agendas together. And I'm good with the primary goal being getting it out on Thursday. I think that's the goal, and there's gonna be exceptions to that.
And I assume, I assume if we all agree, and we don't have enough time to read it, we can kick it to the next agenda.
Right.
I meant, that's our call, each agenda, to do that. If we would decide, we've overburdened all of us, we can just kick it to the next agenda.
Yeah, I think, I guess, rather than doing that, I was hoping that we might be able to just kind of set the precedent that staff could make that decision internally based on just a small rule that we set. But either way, as long as we all understand that we are delaying some review of the hard work that's already been put in, and then maybe some items can be moved or move forward, because we have had some very light meetings over the past few meetings, so it all builds up.
Sitting here, right here, because I left the whole stack that was the stick in my car, and I thought, I can just carry this.
Yeah, exactly.
And thumb through it if I need to.
No, not to, again, negate any of the hard work that goes into preparing these items, but just so that we can give you our best look at it, just something to consider, or if we just look at it again, and if there's items that we think might exceed what the public expects us for a thorough review, we just consider that at the beginning when we approve the agenda, I guess. So, okay, that's fine.
Anybody else? Okay, then that takes us to our consent calendar, and our first item is the City of Fillmore warrant register, April 23, 24. And let me get to that.
Are you gonna pull those?
No.
Or just gonna consent?
Yep.
Just approve the consent?
Let's just approve, yeah, consent.
Okay, I move to approve the consent.
I second.
Okay, so the consent agenda's been approved. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Hearing none, then the consent calendar's approved. I had a note on that 8A, and I don't remember what it was now, but anyway, moving on to...
And here's one of the big paper ones. Moving on to our paper.
Item 9A, adoption of plan specifications and cost estimate for project specification number 1901, et cetera. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Too many pages? For what? Okay, I just didn't know, I was like, I think you're confused where we're at.
Your capital improvement program projects, all on the same agenda, which is, what happened? And in fact, so that we'll go through them one at a time, and yes, it's a lot, and no, this will not be our normal. So the first one that we're gonna talk about here is the Mountain View Street Sidewalk Extension Project, which we call Spec Number 1901, because it's been a long time coming. We started this project in 2019. We are talking about the reach of Mountain View that is between Ventura Street Traffic Signal and Santa Clara, so from the highway to Santa Clara Street, right there on Mountain View Street by the Church of Christ, across the street from Mini Mansions, where they built the new sidewalk with that installation at Mountain View Apartments. This is a RMRA-funded project, using SB1 money that we originally identified in 2019, and then we accumulated funds over a few years, and now we're rolling with it. The idea here is to build a sidewalk with DG Pathway. We'll start here at the southern end, in the, off to the left there is the, or your right, I don't know. At the end is the traffic signal at Mountain View NSR 126, that is the Church of Christ. This is the southerly driveway. The project will be installing new sidewalk, four feet wide in this area with a variable width, decomposed granite parkway. The DG is for now, we will be putting some irrigation in there so that there's an option for a future landscaping project, but the landscaping is not a part of this project at this time, but we will prepare it for a future landscaping. prepare it for future landscaping, should we decide that is a need on the street, not side of the street. That existing slope with the trees and mulch on it adjacent the Church of Christ will be taken out, and this retaining wall that ends at the corner right now will be extended, and it will extend right through the southerly driveway, closing the driveway. And then there's the second driveway into the church parking lot will remain open and be reconstructed to have the sidewalk through it, as well as the adjacent residential driveway will be reconstructed. This is what it looks like in plan view. This is the driveway that we will be closing, the second southerly driveway to Church of Christ, excuse me, and the retaining wall is there. It goes from where the end of the existing retaining wall is, all the way up and up into the new driveway approach. And then the two driveways are right here, the second, the northerly driveway entrance to the church and the driveway adjacent to the residential property. And then on the northern end of the street, this is the corner at Santa Clara Street. We'll be also rebuilding a driveway to meet the new sidewalk elevation. This portion will be a ten-foot wide sidewalk with no parkway, and we'll be reconstructing the corner and removing the encroachment of that gate back in, onto the right-of-way line while we reconstruct that driveway and sidewalk. So, that is the scope of work for the Mountain View Sidewalk Project that is before you. This is the plan view of this northerly reach, and that is the driveway that we will be reconstructing. As I mentioned, this is SB one funded. We are estimating just under three hundred thousand dollars as construction cost. I have an update to the schedule that published in the staff report, because it was, we were gonna bring this in the prior meeting, and it fell into this meeting, so it got pushed. And so, that should've really been updated to say that we'll advertise bids this week. We'll open bids May sixteenth, and award contract on May twenty-eighth, so the work can continue through the summer, basically, and then we'll probably be closing it out in August, maybe sooner, depending on how quickly the work. Once you get underway on a sidewalk, it's just that there are retaining wall and other things, so we're thinking that it may take a couple months to construct. So, the city council has allocated a total of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the RMRA funds already to the project by resolution, including budget for soft costs and like design, construction, management, and inspection, so no additional budget appropriation is required. We will provide you a bid analysis with budget breakdown upon bid opening when we present to the council, hopefully on May twenty-eighth, for consideration of award of contract. So, that is my information on this item. Do you guys have any further questions?
The reason why they're closing this first driveway?
It's too close to the highway.
Okay.
And also, the elevation, we can't really create a way, but it's also, it's right before the highway, and so the proximity to the highway, as well as the elevation. It's gonna be a taller retaining wall at that location.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for all your work.
You're welcome. And we've already talked to the church about it. They've, like, from initial, they were great about it. They're absolutely in agreement, and have already signed the right-of-entry, and everything is fine with them, and they completely support the project.
And they had Ellie back that they can use.
Yes, that's correct. They've been wonderful.
Just for clarification, on the screen you have up right now, where's the existing driveway, and where's the new, the new one going to be?
This one, we're rebuilding the existing driveway at that same location where I just put the yellow square.
Okay.
That's the, here, I'll show you the picture. That's the driveway in the lower picture with the gate across it, but the gate is in our right-of-way, so we'll be moving that back. You can see from the top picture, that building's no longer red, but that's an older picture. But see how the fencing comes all the way out into the public right-of-way?
Oh, right, okay, got it.
We'll be moving that fencing back to the back of walk.
Okay.
And the gate.
Okay.
All that.
Looking at the report itself, page thirty-five, second paragraph down, cost estimate for this project is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven fifty. So, and again, I may have missed something, but then fiscal impact, city council has allocated a total of five hundred and seventy-five thousand for this. Is that-
That's the funding that we've set aside. I thought the retaining walls would be much larger, and the way that it's been designed, now that we have final cost estimate, we're thinking it's gonna come in within budget, and we won't spend all of that, but we'll find out when we open the bids. That's just what's already been allocated.
Okay, okay, so we're-
We're not asking for that right now, yeah.
And then, you said that you spoke to the people at the Church of Christ. The first photo, I think, that you showed, the first slide, yeah, one thing that has bothered me tremendously every time I'm at that intersection is that fence on top of the retaining wall in the corner. So, do they have any plans of changing that? They're gonna be responsible for that retaining wall, or, I mean, after it gets developed, any landscaping that's adjacent to it on their side of it? Is that correct?
Yeah, that retaining wall was put in by us when we built that traffic signal, and the railing on top of it was required because of their land, the fall height is over forty-two inches, so we needed railing at the top because of the walkway above. I mean, it was a city CIP project-
So, did the city put up that fence?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's ours.
No.
We can change it if you like.
Yeah. Boy, was I unplanning when that happened?
Probably.
I don't know. I don't know how that got biased.
You had to have been. I bet you signed away on it.
I probably select- My question, obviously, is, can that be changed, especially since the retaining wall's gonna be a lot longer, and we're gonna need longer fencing? So, is that something that's included?
Depending on the height, as the street comes up, the wall will get shorter, and it won't be required the whole length of it, but I can definitely take a look at, before we advertise, I can take a look at other options and something that maybe isn't as offensive.
We have a surplus.
I can absolutely take a look at that, and at least for the new fencing in the project, and we can even consider updating that fencing to match.
Great, okay.
It looks like we have available budget, so we can add a line item for that, yeah. We can add a line item to that, see what it would cost, and then you guys consider it as part of the project award.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The current consideration, though, is to just add to that funds versus replacing it with the retaining wall?
To do more of the same.
Can we put some planning-
Until the fence height gets below where it's required.
Right.
Right. So, it wouldn't come all the way up the street, but it is gonna be extended by that slope. You're gonna get more of that if we don't fix it.
Yeah, I think some of the fencing that I've seen around at the park, some of the iron would look pretty good there, and kinda be a little more cohesive with some of the other designs throughout the city.
Great.
So.
We will update that.
Are you sure we put that fencing up?
Yeah, you signed it.
Yeah, I did those plans.
I think we'll go back and look at any question you did.
Okay.
I didn't consult with Kevin, so it's not pretty.
There you go.
Kevin, you remember her doing it, right?
It's very engineering.
That does not look like Kevin.
Okay.
Very, yeah. It's a standard guard rail, yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Just the last question I have regarding that other property where we're having to move the fence that's in the right-of-way. There's still no response from that property owner.
We have not made contact with them so far, correct? We've been attempting to, but gotten no response.
Right, right, no.
They've not responded to the attempts of contact that we've made.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, Christina, are you with us? Did we lose her?
No, I'm here.
Oh, good. Any questions at all?
No.
Comments?
You just wanna get rid of that fencing, huh?
Okay, Dan, let's, do I have a motion on this item?
I motion the city council to adopt the plans, specifications, and estimates for the extension of the sidewalk on the west side of Mountain View Street between Ventura Street and Santa Clara Street, known as Project Specifications nineteen dash one, the project, and authorize advertisement of the project for construction bids.
Okay, that a second.
I'll second.
The motion a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? This matter passes. Thank you. Okay, and I'm assuming you're going to stay up there for a little while.
Camp out, yeah.
Okay. We're moving on to item number nine B, adoption of plan specifications and cost estimate for project specification number twenty-two zero three, City Hall Plaza Restoration Project and Authorization to Advertise for Construction Bids.
Thank you. So, here's our number two capital improvement program project for tonight. This, as you're aware, this infrastructure here at our City Hall Plaza is aging. The building and premise was built in nineteen ninety-seven, so we're approaching like almost our thirty-year mark. This project will remove and rebuild sections of the brick paver inlay between City Hall and the fountain that's been an issue for a while. The idea is to remove and clean and reuse the bricks, but fix the failures and get them all laid correctly again, but maintain the same look and do like a strategic strike, not replace all the brick, but just where it's broken. Remove and re-pour sections of concrete staircase, repair the base of hand railing, remove, replace, or replace lifted and cracked concrete panels in various locations, fix the broken tree wells, regrade turf areas to make them level, and bring utility boxes to grade, and various ADA improvements for compliance with current standards, including handrail extensions and various items like that, missing planter bed wall caps and other miscellaneous, you know, we need some TLC at the City Hall Plaza, and that's what this project is for. And so, the engineer's cost estimate on the work that's laid out here is a hundred and sixty-four thousand. This will have the same schedule as the sidewalk project, intending to bid them at the same time, do the bid opening on the same day, come back for award of contract on the May twenty-eighth council meeting, and if everything goes well, so be prepared for another big agenda on May twenty-eighth, if that works, and then this would also be in construction at the same time that the Mountain View sidewalk down the street was, would be under construction. And I think that's all I have on this item. Any questions?
Turn it over to council. Any questions for staff?
I was just curious, so I know it looks like we're looking at using some ARPA funding. Does the plaza technically, like, is it a continuation of the park as part of, like, the city hall? Is it all kinda one? Like, is there eventually, potentially, park funds that we could apply to the plaza through a grant or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
No, I don't think so.
Or is it, or there's a lot more specific to typical parks with playgrounds and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that the city park plaza is considered like an extension of the civic center, and it doesn't have playground equipment and other amenities like a regular park. It's more of a meeting place, a civic, civic center.
Right.
Is this one that has extra slush money in it, too?
No.
No, we're pretty tight.
I'm just asking, because the back door could use some help, too.
I noted that.
The back door needs some really bad help.
Congressman Grill, were you talking about just this desert, or on the other side of the track?
I'm talking about just the combination of the two, whether it's considered all one park. I mean, I know we kind of have this called Central Park, but I don't know if it would formally qualify for any of the park grants that, or might qualify, be eligible for any of those kind of grants.
That's an interesting question. Is this park considered a city park? I'm getting the yes from the back.
We call it that. It doesn't have any park amenities other than a gathering space, right? But, um-
I mean, there's not really a legal definition for a park, as far as-
I'm sorry?
We call it a park, and there's not really a legal definition for that, but usually when you apply for park funds, it's specific to improvements for park amenities.
Can we put a swing out there?
So, if there were upgrades needed, we could use funding or grants, or whatever funding that's earmarked for city parks, we could use there.
That's a good question.
Well, that's, it depends. I mean, we don't have any grant funds that I'm aware of right now for a city park. For DIF funds, you probably couldn't use that for out there, because that's for new infrastructure. I mean, I guess if you put in some kind of new amenities or something, you could possibly use it there, if it's in our DIF study is one of the things that we need to collect the DIF funds for. So, that's not an easy question, even though it seems like a yes.
No, it's not, yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I meant, that's the first time I've ever heard that question.
The reason why I'm-
Kind of going down the rabbit hole, but-
Uh-huh.
Yeah, no, it is a little bit of rabbit hole. It's one that-
It's a good question.
That I went down, mostly because I know that there are some other park improvements that we've considered and are hoping to receive grant money for, but unfortunately, a lot of that was kinda, I think we had to reapply for several of those, and I'm just wondering if we might be able to kinda restrategize, and this definitely needs some improvements, but there might be other ones that might have a greater immediate need that I don't know if this money could be used for. I would only probably go down that path if we think we could potentially apply for a park grant to make some of these improvements, if we think it would qualify here in the City Hall Park Plaza, whatever we're calling it. And I also understand that some of this funding, I believe, has to be committed by the end of the calendar year, is that right? Yeah, so there is a little bit of a timeline here to make that kind of a decision, but it seems like, in particular, what comes to mind is Shields Park. I know that some of the improvements there, but then also the parking lot and even the road, which, again, that's maybe getting a little bit more outside the scope, and we have another road project that's gonna be presented. But something that I've noticed, that the C Street is heavily used, it's not one that I saw that's on our agenda for repairs, but whether it might be worth considering shifting that, or maybe reprioritizing use of the ARPA funds while, because we're waiting for park grant money that got kicked down the road by state, which I don't know that we've heard back at all on those. So, anyway, just something to consider, and maybe we could consider this as a future grant kind of project.
You're talking about all of the upgrades that-
Not necessarily all of them. I think the immediate safety concerns would be good use of the ARPA funds, but there are, I think, some other potential safety concerns, maybe not immediate trip hazards like we might have out there with the, with the brick pavers, but safety hazards in the sense that the parking lot over there at Shields Park is probably the most worn-out piece of pavement that I can think of in the city, outside of maybe some of the other ones that we are gonna address tonight, so just for consideration about whether it might be worth to piecemeal, but again, I'm not as familiar with the park grants, and whether piecemealing them might just kinda lose the project in entirety.
I could speak to that, too, the intent that park funds oftentimes are, do, you know, depending on the grant program, they are for either expansion of use, either footprint-wise or additional amenities-wise, and this is all maintenance and repair of existing facilities. That said, the Shields Park parking lot, that particular grant is some, has some maintenance to it, but it's definitely for parks that are regular parks, like with ball fields and other amenities that are a community space for those kinds of activities, whereas this one is more, we call it a park, but it's a gathering place that's a part of our civic plaza, so if we did move the ARPA funds to fix Shields Park in the short term, and then come back and try to use those restricted park funds on this project, this project would not be eligible. I could tell you that now, just from the scope of work that we're looking at. And we also have very little going on in the park area itself. Most of it is sidewalk and brick and handrails. There's like a little bit of turf here and there. It's like a very minor component of this project.
Okay, and that does answer my question, though, that this kind of work wouldn't be eligible under any of those park funds, but that's something that we definitely consider in the future, especially with, I think, well, we lost a tree over there at the, in the actual grassy area of the park last winter, things like that, where you can kinda make it a little bit more usable, outside of just being a piece of grass. So, okay, thank you for answering my questions.
All right. Other council members, questions for staff?
If I could chime in, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that I wholeheartedly agree with using the current funds that are here allocated to do the repairs that need to be done in front of City Hall, and, you know, there are a lot of safety issues out there. in front of City Hall. And, you know, there, there are a lot of safety issues out there, like, you know, you mentioned the handrail, and, you know, as you drive by, a lot of folks mostly drive by City Hall or get off really quick for the water bill, from, you know, from far away, things, things look great, but you start looking, look closer, there's, there's a lot of repairs to be made, to be made. And also, the more that we, we have these events, especially nighttime events, in front of City Hall, it's just, it's just really essential that for the public safety that we, you know, you know, broken off pieces of sidewalk, all, all these things that we're addressing is really important. So just want to chime that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Going back to the same question I had on the previous item, applies here, only it's the reverse. It says, "Cost estimate for this project is 164,000." And we've only allocated 150,000. First question.
Yep. So on this one, again, this is just to adopt the plans and specs and advertise the bids, and then we'll open up the bids, and if they come in more than 150, when we come back with the bid analysis, we're going to be giving you, either removing some work items to get it down within the available budget, or asking and identifying funds that could be added to do all of the scope of work, and that'll be part of the bid analysis at the award of contract consideration.
Okay, and then my last question, I don't see it noted on the scope of work map of the property, but I know that there's issues with the back door, with the concrete at the, right at the entry, at the door jam, basically, where the concrete, and that's not noted in here. Something that is on the list of to-dos, and that's something I think that's...
It's been hara, it's been, I've been, I've been harassed by it for eight years now.
I, I probably...
I've been looking at it for eight years.
But you know what I'm talking about?
I've been through the back door all the time, but I'm loaded with all my stuff when I'm going to...
Where the raid falls off and the concrete's eaten away at the back door, at the back door panel.
Okay, I can get that added before...
Yeah, we need to add that.
Okay.
So...
It's right in the frame. It's right in, right under the frame.
Right under the frame, okay.
I would think it would be an issue with the door itself and security at some point, if it continues to deteriorate like that. So, anyway.
Engineer didn't even notice it.
No, I didn't. You do.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I'll go photograph it for you right now.
No other discussion? Okay, then, do I have a motion on this item?
Okay, I'll do it again. Make a motion to City Council, adopt plan specifications, estimates for the preservation of pavement on various street segments that include sidewalk repairs, curb, and gutter repairs, and replacement of certain curb ramps for ADA compliance, known as Project Specifications Number 2303 Project, and authorize the advertisement of the project construction bid.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that the correct one?
Okay.
Sorry. I think you jumped to the next one there.
Oh, yeah, that did sound different.
Title-wise, yeah. That's the...
I jumped to the next one? Ah, okay, I'll, I'll still make the motion. I motioned that one already. You go ahead and go, go for it.
I, I move that we adopt, that City Council adopt the plan specifications, estimate PCNE for restoration of certain items in this repair within the City Hall Plaza, known as Project Specification Number 22-03 Project, and authorize the advertisement of the project for construction bids.
Okay, may I have a second?
Isn't that what I just did?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Okay, one more. This is our pavement preservation project, spec number 2303. And again, this one is SB1 money that we spend every year for streets, and we've supplemented with VCTC money from TDA Article 8B, so, or 8A, Article 8A. So, um, in every year, we adopt a resolution to spend RMRA funds, and we identify streets on that street list, but we're not held to doing specifically those streets. We can do more or less. We can change our mind, depending on what priorities come up. The resolution that we adopted this year included Santa Clara Street and Village Square, as well as Blaine. And on this map, this is a map of the street work that we're going to do, and we've got A R H M Stansfield Asphalt Rubber Hot Mix, which is a grind and pave with new asphalt. And we've got two streets that we're going to do new pavement on. One is Village Square Road, all the way out to C Street, and the other is Santa Clara Avenue from Mountain View, all the way over to Central. And then the rest of the streets here, we're going to do a Cape Seal, which is not a full grind and pave, but it's a, a chip seal with a, with a slurry seal on top of it. So it's not just rock and rough because you fill it in with the slurry seal, but it's a two, two-layer, less expensive, so it, you can do a lot more streets with Cape Seal, and you can get to more of them. And so we're doing Blaine with the Cape Seal, but we're also going to do Oakdale Lane, Elmhurst Lane, Deerfield Lane, Carriage Place, Surrey Way, McNabb Court, and Rhodes Court with the Cape Seal on this project, and we think we have enough money. The engineer's estimate is $724,000 roughly to do all of these streets, because we're using Cape Seal plus some overlay to get a little more bang for our buck. And the streets that we're Cape sealing are not in that bad of condition. They're like block cracked, age-related distress primarily. We will R and R any failures in them, but they don't have a lot of failures. They're just really aging, and they, this chip, chip seal plus slurry seal on top ought to give us another 10, 15 years before you actually have to pave them. And so that's the street strategy for this bid, and we've got 307,000 of SB1 funding, plus another 442 of TDA, Article 8A, that we need to spend on streets, which is local transportation fund. And again, once we open the bids, we'll provide you a bid analysis, a budget breakdown on presentation, and at that point, we'll go over soft costs. Design, construction, inspection are all part of what's funded through those funding programs. And so we're not asking for any budget changes right now. We're just asking for you to approve going out to bid. Any questions?
I have one question. On Santa Clara Street, is there a reason, or can we add from the Mountain View Apartments to the 126? That street is really, really...
We're not, I should have addressed that. Actually, there's two things I should have addressed. That one is not being done because we need to replace the water line before we pave it, and we don't want to end up in a situation where we're going to tear up the street to put in a water line right after we paved it. And so that water project is in the works, and will include replacing the water line and paving the street. So we will be paving that after we, the Mountain View Apartments project replaced the water line under the, and paved down to where you're talking about. And, but they, when they joined back to the old CIP water line that we need to replace with PVC, and so we'll be replacing that water line the rest of the way out to the highway before we pave Santa Clara, and that's why it's not in the street work right now. Very good question. Yeah, and then the second thing is, I, I forgot to mention, I'm going to push back the bid advertisement and opening an award on this one to give it space between the other two and give us more time to do everything, smooth out the workflow a little bit for you and for me. So we're, I'm probably not going to advertise this until like the first week of May and shoot for the June 12th meeting for award, which still puts this under construction in the summertime. So I meant to make that correction. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was curious. I had mentioned Shields Park before. In, in particular, an area of concern that I have is between Shields Park and then south on C Street to First Street is, is pretty beat up. C Street in general is starting to wear, I think, but obviously that's, that's a much longer stretch. I don't know if, is that part of the strategy to wait until we can get the whole stretch of C Street? Or is there enough ability, or is there ability to kind of shift some of that over there? It's, I mean, it's heavily used. We saw more use when the bridge was closed, probably by heavier vehicles as well that typically go over the bridge. Whether there's any, any way we can make that consideration within the plan to add or shift. I, I drove, I know Santa Clara Street had some recent work. But, but it's much more drivable, I think, than that portion of C Street. So in my opinion, the Santa Clara Street improvement, my, while it would make it much better, it seems like the, the C Street portion would be maybe better bang for our buck with, especially with the heavy, not only just heavy vehicles, go, you know, potentially going back there towards the industrial areas, but then also just the large usage from the, the general public going to Shields Park. I don't know if that's, that could be worked in, in this project, or if that would have to be something completely separate.
So two things. One, C Street also has some utility work coming up that we're trying to coordinate. We're looking at trying to fit that into next year, so we're putting together our RMRA street list for next year, and we are looking at C Street as we coordinate it with the work that needs to be done it before we pave it. So we've kind of got that in the future. And second thing, if I did that whole reach of C Street, I wouldn't be able to do any of the other work. So it would be like just that project with the funding I have, or mostly just that project, and we really need to get to Village Square. And Santa Clara Street from Fillmore to Mountain View was part of last year's work, but it got bumped because of the undergrounding that Edison was doing, and so we're kind of just following up on doing it. And the idea is that it's not in the worst condition, which means it's cheaper to fix it now than wait for it to get worse. And we're trying to, like, spend the money wisely. Like, Village Square was already gone and has been gone for some time, and so we finally allocated. That's going to be one of the most expensive streets that we do, but we're finally getting to it. And the Santa Clara Street being split up with the other end being related to a water project helps. And then C Street also has storm drain and water that we want to put in it before we pave it, and that's one of the reasons that we've been putting it off. But we are looking at programming that next year.
Roxanne, I have a question, because I remember years ago, we had the, we had the whole city on all the streets, and they were all graded A, B, you know, all that, and it kind of had how we were going to go about upgrading all the streets eventually in the city. Do you still, you still work off of that, correct?
Correct. It's the pavement can, the pavement management system?
Yeah, we have a whole book of streets in the, in the entire city. I think that'd be worth just sending that schematic out to council so they can at least see it, so that they know that you're not just...
Yeah.
You know, you're picking the streets that need the most in the city.
There's a pavement condition index map. That's what you're talking about, the colorful map with the pavement condition index, and we'll be updating that next fiscal year as well, because it's been three years since we did the street rating, so it's time to do a reset and reevaluate and update that report next year, and next, we've got that in next fiscal year's budget. But yeah, we, that pavement management system, it was done in 2021. And so it's time for update in 2024. And, um, yes, we do use that. We look at those pavement condition indexes, and we try to prioritize according to, you know, we don't necessarily...
I think it'd be something useful to council to see.
Absolutely. We can, we can circulate that.
Yeah, I, I think that would also, actually be good for the next round, next year, to include in this as well. Just, again, because it's easier to forget what we did last year, and then maybe what, you know, just kind of see, hey, what's the cycle look like? Because I know that's part of it, but seeing it is another thing. For the C Street utility improvements, is that tied in at all to the potential Norfield more developments, or is that separate?
Separate.
Okay.
With regard to the list that you're talking about, that we're going to update on the street, the priority streets in the order, at some point in time, wasn't that made available to the public? I know I do get inquiries, a lot, a lot of council people do.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't say what streets we're going to do every year. It just gives you the rating of the streets, because every year we kind of reprioritize when we look at it. But we can, we can probably put the map on the website, if that's, if that's helpful. The, the, the report went to council and was a council attachment, so it's somewhere in the agendas, you know, if you know what, what date it went in 2021. But we could probably take at least just the PCI rating map and make it available through a link if you guys want.
Yeah, I don't want to create any extra work, you know, for, for staff on this, but I guess if somebody really wants to know, simply call City Hall and say, you know, when is such and such a thing going to be paid?
Yeah, we can, we can send it to people. We have it readily available, yeah, in digital form. It's a PDF.
Okay.
Yeah, and then for next year's pavement management system, we're looking at, we'll be asking you guys about using an AI program when we do the update. There's some pretty cool stuff available now. So stand by, and we're to come on that one.
Don't make us go to AI.
All right, any other questions? Christina? Anything from you?
No questions, but I'm, I'm one of those who heard from a couple of folks in Village Square, so I know they're going to be very happy to see this.
Yeah. All right, then, may I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt, City Council adopt the plan specifications and estimate PSE for the preservation of pavement on various, various street segment that include sidewalks, repairs, curb, and gutter repairs, and replacement of certain curb ramps for ADA compliance, known as Project specification number 23-03 Project, and authorize the advertisement of the project for construction bids.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this agenda item passes. Okay, moving right along now to item 9D. No, 9D we pulled. Okay. And again, 9D is going, and that's, will show up on our agenda at the next meeting. So 9E, this is a First Amendment to the Wild and Engineering Services Contract for City Engineering Services.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and residents. Tonight, I would like to request council to consider a First Amendment to the Wild and Engineering Services Contract. Just to provide you a little bit of background, this is more of a routine item, but I want to provide the constituents as well with background information. The city has contracted Wild and Engineering Services since June of 2017. Last year, on February 2023, staff released an RFP, Seeking Proposal from Engineering Firms for As-Needed Engineering Services, using our electronic procurement service, which is called Planet Bids. And after reviewing of the proposal, staff brought to council for consideration and approval a three-year contract, and that happened at the meeting in May 23 of last year. So today's request is to amend the contract to capture a lot of the projects that you have already approved. It's just not logistically, it wouldn't work logistically if we were to, every time that there's a project brought forward to council, to also have to amend the contract constantly. So that's why we're here today, to make sure that everything is being captured into the contract. The increase is needed due to recently approved city projects, like I just mentioned, falling under a new category of special projects. Special projects include mandatory compliance reporting, any individual projects need mitigation issues like, trying to mitigate issues like the sewer collapse, identified special or specific needs beyond usual scope, ranging from infrastructure upgrades to environmental compliance. The contract expansion also requires to accommodate additional work for these specialized projects, and the increase in the contract sum reflects the city's commitment to addressing the pressing issues and fulfilling responsibilities for specialized projects. So this is just to capture the actual amendment amount. We have taken under considerations. We are in year, year, first year, so we're about to complete the first year of the contract, but we have also taken under consideration years two and three of the contract. And so we have proposed that some of those increases be included in the fiscal year budget 25, which will be brought to council in an upcoming meeting. We have also met with the finance department, and we've gone through the list of all the items, make sure that we reconcile them against the funding source that it would be paid for. And so we are requesting council tonight to increase the amount by 988,194.75 to capture what has already been approved. The contract sum will obviously increase to 2,858.194.74. We're also requesting Exhibit C of the contract, which is the schedule of compensation, to revise the amount not to exceed. Currently, how it was written, we had a amount that was yearly, a not-to-exceed amount. However, a lot of these projects will go from one fiscal year to the other one, and so it makes sense for us to remove that cap that we had yearly. And also, we're requesting for Exhibit A, which is under scope of services, to drop the actual time that they, we had requested originally for staff to be here from Wild End. They are still providing staff from Monday through Thursday. The reason why we're doing that is because it conflicts with the IRS regulations. Once you start dictating a consultant with specific hours, then they become your employee. And so we want to make sure that's also... And so we want to make sure that's also addressed during this amendment. So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll turn it over to council. Questions for staff? Bear with me one moment here, please.
Maybe just because it wasn't part of the presentation, could you briefly comment? It was it was in our packet, the the number of staff from Willdan that are typically involved with our projects. It's it's not just Roxanne and our engineers that are here.
So we Roxanne has a team of people that do project management. They do design. They're not physically here, but they're working remotely from their offices in Wellden. But we do have three dedicated staff members to our deputy city engineers along with Roxanne. And they're the ones that typically come here to City Hall. But she has a massive amount of staff that we couldn't even support that internally. So it's it's good that we have their services.
I'm trying to give opportunities for the public to understand the scope. So I think one example of where it would be difficult for full-time staff working for the city to manage some of these bigger projects. We're seeing, I think, a warranty action over on C Street near the church, just south of the highway, which was built into the contract that Willdan drew up and kind of put out to bid. Correct me if I'm wrong, any of us. And it's currently ongoing. And I believe it was brought up yesterday and they're already doing work today. So it just seems like so far, so good, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, I think I have absolutely no issues or concerns at all with approving this. But any other comments?
Nope.
Okay. All right. And thanks for raising that issue about the most recent occurrence yesterday where I think a lot of what Willden's done has been helpful in that regard to the maintenance on the sewer that pipes that we had issues with and this most current one as well. So anyway, so do I have a motion on this then?
I motion City Council approve the first amendment to the Willdown Engineering Contract for City Engineering Services and authorize the city manager to sign the first amendment to the contract.
I have a second.
I'll second.
First and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, then this agenda item passes. Takes us to our next agenda item, nine F, consideration of two contracts, one for G I S software and one for support for the software.
Thank you, Mayor. That item is mine as well. And so we are requesting you tonight to consider the approval of two contracts. One of them would be an enterprise license agreement with Arc G I S software. And technically, they're the Environmental System Research Institute. That's what Esri stands from. And they are the parent company for a period of three years. The city utilizes them right now, but not to its full potential. And then as part of that, we're requesting you to consider the approval of a professional services agreement with Pro West and Associates for the information system or the G I S. They work on a block support hours of 500. And so they'll be providing training and helping the city build the layers. And so as background information, the city of Fillmore relies heavily on data that's available for decision-making operations. And this would also allow us to do citizen engagement because it's very powerful. The enterprise G I S system is a crucial data source utilized for managing geographical data, generating maps and providing geospatial functionality for various applications. And Esri is the sole software provider, meeting the city's ability and the compatibility requirements enabling us to share data with neighboring jurisdictions as well. Some of the projects that we've discussed at an executive level that we would like to see are areas which are called layers or aerial map layers. And we would like to have an upgrade on our zoning map, our general plan map, quarterly Ventura County Assessor Information, all planning entitlements, ability to do radius maps. We could also add there the newly election district map as well. Fire hazard, there's a list there. I'm not going to go through all of them. But in addition to that, it will allow staff also to be able to deploy apps that are already built through the system. One of the things that we would like to also build is, I know the fire chief has been requesting that we somehow upgrade the weed abatement program. And so we can deploy an app using the software and be able to have the fire department go do the checks, just drop a pin and then generate a list fairly quickly, be able to mail merge and then send that information out to the constituents. And so this upgrade will allow us to have that technology available, which we believe it's necessary to be able to continue operating at the needs of the fast pace that technology is changing. So the cost then council goals, the enterprise license agreement with Esri is based on population count. So we have negotiated with them. It's a reduced cost that we were able to get and it's on a three-year buildup. And the reason for that is we want to make sure that we are training staff and we're utilizing the software to its full capacity. And so we understand that the first year is going to be more building that empty file cabinet that we don't have, which is the data and the layers. And so and providing training to staff. And then as we start using this, then there'll be an incremental of the amount that we would be paying for the contract. We do have unlimited licenses and our goal is to make sure that everyone has access to it and training. Pro West and Associate is one of the business partners that Esri utilizes. We did get a couple of proposals. We did reference checks. We met with both of the business partners. And after doing reference checks, we decided it was best to go with Pro West and Associate just because of the reference that came back and also the number of staff members that they have. They have a really big staff and we believe it's going to be beneficial for the city. And so for Pro West, I know the cost is a little bit higher. But what we would be doing would be purchasing 500 block hours. And you purchase them in advance and then we're able to utilize those as we need them for the data buildup and the training as well for staff. Funding for this two contracts is currently available in the Planning Community Development Account. And then we would just budget for subsequent years as needed, if this gets approved tonight. And it does meet the council, it aligns with the council goals of organizational excellence and commitment of engagement and communication. So that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, council, questions, comments?
Yeah, so I've used many times the the county's G I S system. Will this one eventually have the ability to be publicly accessible? Not editable, but just accessible of the layers that we do have?
That's the the goal. And so we need this also to be able to implement a planning and community development permitting software. This is step one so that we can move forward on, you know, implementing potentially like a work order system for public works and then having a planning and community development where you can just go into a portal, submit the applications. But this is the foundation in order to move in that direction.
Right. And it might be a licensing issue. Obviously, I just mentioned the county's system. Is their system technically not eligible for the city to tie into because of licensing? Or I I think it's come up maybe once in the past and is because it didn't entirely reside in like a city database. It couldn't, it wasn't owned and managed by us. It couldn't necessarily be legal.
We would be getting some of the data from the county, which would be importing into our G I S system. The issue is that what you mentioned, it's not our G I S system and we have no control of what layers we can build. So by us going in this direction, we get to determine which layers will benefit the city or the departments and and move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Christina.
I may. Thank you so much. So this is just a comment. And, you know, for those who may be looking at the prices and say, oh, gosh, so much for the consultants as opposed to the tool. It's you really, we really need the consultants to provide all that information, all the training for, you know, for our staff to use it. I mean, the the potential of G I S is 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 just immense, such such an important tool. So just want to point that out, that the tool, it's true, the tool will be cheaper than than the consultants. But you really, you really need to have the consultants in order to fully utilize the G I S tool. So I'm really glad the city is doing this. And yeah, and hopefully, like you said, we could build those layers. Really interesting also to build layers of demographic data, you know, across our community too. It's always this very interesting information when you look at it overlayed with other things.
I'm very happy we're getting it. Something I use every day.
Well, I'm glad everyone else.
It's really, it's really, it's really a strong tool.
Okay, apparently, everyone has experience with this except me. So.
Well, it's you'll get it. It's easy. It's easy.
Okay, so going back to Chief Gorilla's hypothetical use. So how is the aerial, I'm assuming there's an aerial shot of some?
So I guess the easiest way I can explain it, you know, when you drop a pin on your map? So you go in, you drop a pin, and then that data filters into a database. But there's a lot of also like applications that are already built in. Like you could have a a form if you're trying to collect data. And then that form can transfer into like population of maps as well.
But the information has to get in there in the first place. So how how would, again, using the Chief Gorilla's example, how does the initial information of the houses that are in the fire zones?
Get that that layer. Okay, so the layer will be part of the Pro West contract. They're going to build that those layers for us and they they get the data. We already have some data and the data is called shape files. So we'll use some of the existing data, put it into the database. We'll probably combine some data from the county as well. And so we're building that file cabinet with different sources. And also that wish list that I explained earlier, to be able to have all of those layers and all of that data available.
Great, okay. And and I I agree with Christina's comments too, that I think it's an excellent idea to, you know, spend the extra dollars to get this kind of training too. And that'll go a long way. And maybe I can sit in on some of this training and learn more about it. So anyway, any other questions, comments?
No, I just wanted to comment and say thank you to staff for your hard work for putting this presentation together. And it's a very much needed tool that the city can use. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I moved it. I don't want to read the wrong motion.
I move that the city approved enterprise license agreement, E L A, in an approved format by the city attorney for Arc G I S software with Environmental System Research Institute, E S R I, for a period of three years. And to approve a professional services agreement in an approved format by the city attorney, P S A, Pro West and Associate for Geographic Information System Professional Services Block and Training for 500 dollars.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, this agenda item passes. Okay, moving right along. Thank you very much. Are you up for the next one as well? Item nine G, update and discuss discussion of the 2024 aquatic session, season.
Thank you, Mayor. Just load this real quick. Okay, so. So this item is mine. I want to provide you also with an update of the aquatic season for this year. The goal here is to discuss the staffing challenges and propose a solution for the 2024 season. And I want to reiterate that staff understands that the aquatic center is a vital community resource. But unfortunately, staffing issues have been present and they require attention. So I will give you a background of what we've done so far and then answer any questions and then open it for discussion for you to provide us with guidance on how you would like to proceed. So the current situation, as of this evening, we have received 12 applications. However, out of the 12 applicants, only three applicants have confirmed they plan to attend the mandatory lifeguard certification. Four of those have not called to confirm attendance and five have declined the position as they are not available for the certification. And I do want to mention that in order for them to qualify for the position, they do have to pass the lifeguard certification, which is a pretty intense training. It's a two-day, two-week and two-day certification process. And so this year, we have been successful in partnering with the Fillmore Unified Swim Coach. Swim Blatt has been fantastic. She has been a great resource to work with this year. I think one of the reasons why we have received so many applications is because of that partnership that we have had with her. She sent the flyer out to all of the students that are currently in the swim team, gave it to the track coach, also provided to the Santa Paula Unified. And so the word has been getting out there. We have been making announcements at city council meetings, social media posts. And we have also outreach to past, we've done outreach to past employees who have been lifeguards. Unfortunately, most of those employees have moved out of town or they're working presently somewhere else. They're going to college, so it's not feasible for them to come this year. We, in addition to having those efforts, there has been a couple of legislation impacts that we are currently dealing with. One of them is A B 1228, which you're all aware of. It passed April 1 of this year and it mandates $20 an hour for fast food operators. And so that is creating a salary competition for this for the city. Lifeguard one earns minimum wage, which is $16. If you're a return lifeguard, it's $18. And so right now, it's hard for us to compete with these fast food restaurants that are paying 20, $22 an hour. And not saying that the work is not difficult, but the certification process of the lifeguard is a bit more stringent as it is. We also have A B five implications, which has further complicated the situation. And what that means is that legislation imposes a very strict criteria for classifying workers as independent contractors. Prior to that, the city had the ability to be able to just hire a swim instructor to say, you know, we're going to hire you as an independent contractor. Now, unfortunately, there's a test that you have to pass. And unless they're hired through a company that's providing health insurance, we can't really go in that direction. Not for this particular position. So the operational proposal that we would like to discuss with you tonight is having a modified scheduled lap swim from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m., recreation swim from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. potentially. And again, this is contingent upon all four applicants showing to the lifeguard certification and all four passing the certification. It also is contingent upon the employees accepting the job, returning to work after they've been offered the position. If we don't have enough lifeguards on a particular day, then we would probably have to close the pool. the pool. And so I think it's important to think about the feasibility of the schedule. The Red Cross does have a ratio of how many constituents can be utilizing the pool at a given time, and it is 30. However, the instructor that's providing the certification is suggesting that that number be reduced to 25, because a lot of the applicants are minors, and this is the first time they're doing lifeguard, and so it's best to be safe and reduce that number to 25. So the city's risk manager is suggesting that we go with the 25 as well. And then the aquatic center dates, historically, we have operated the pool from Labor Day weekend to Memorial, sorry, from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend, the other way around. And so that's another thing to consider. And then the city management staff did reach out at the beginning of the year to two private operators. One of them had demonstrated interest, however, there was staffing change internally, and then when it was passed on to the new manager there, we did not hear back. So we could potentially, if that's something you would like to do, and you give us direction, is put a request for proposal for next fiscal year for a private operator to run the operations of the pool and provide staffing. That is something that we could consider for fiscal year 25. This is not an unknown, this is not just a one-off or something foreign to just Fillmore. A lot of other jurisdictions are having issues. LA County in particular, which they're much larger and have a much larger population of potential candidates, has been having issues for the past three years. There's a recent article that came out in LA Times, saying that this third year, they're also experiencing the same problem. So it's not something that's, you know, just happening here in Fillmore. So that's in a nutshell, the efforts that we have been conducting. Happy to answer any questions, and would like to open this for, for your discussion and direction on how you would like for us to address this.
One question I have is whether or not, if we had applications come in, you know, obviously at this point, kind of like, I think, I don't know if you said, when the certification is happening, is it this weekend?
The certification is this weekend and the following weekend, and that, those were the dates that the instructor provided to us. He is a student at UCLA. We have reached out to him to try to see if there's a potential alternative date, but we did not hear back from, from him today, so. But that's a possibility.
So we don't know if late applicants might have the ability to.
Fill in.
To fill in, and then potentially expand the schedule out as, as we hire more.
And it would be correct, depending on his availability. One thing I forgot to mention is, he does need three applicants, or three students, I guess, at that time, to be able to do the certification. That's the minimum that's required per Red Cross. So we have to have a minimum of three new applicants who would be willing.
Right. Do returning lifeguards have to go through that same certification because it happened with the city before?
So they, they go, I think they still have to get recertified, I just don't know the specifics, but there is a expiration time, yes, so they have to get recertified.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I have a question, following up on Councilmember Gorilla's question. You say the instructor is a UCLA student, have we looked at other people who might be qualified to provide this instruction? I'm just thinking of like the Kimball Aquatic Center, there's any, you know, anyone there, or Keneho Parks and Rec, you know, just, just thinking of some other folks that maybe could do this and have a more flexible schedule?
Thank you, Councilmember Viasenior, that's a great question. Last year, we did reach out to the Keneho Parks and Recreation, and we did send a couple of students out to Thousand Oaks to get trained. We, for the longest, had a instructor that had worked with the city, but then retired and no longer was doing Red Cross. So for the past two years, we have been trying to secure someone that could just be available for the needs of the city, and that's how we came up with the current instructor. We could reach out to Keneho Valley, last time we did get a minimum of six, which was the requirement, and right now, with the four individuals that have confirmed, we wouldn't meet the minimum requirement from Keneho Valley.
I had somebody who had demonstrated interest, I believe this morning, did you by chance get?
I received one last application prior to coming tonight to the council meeting, so I, the numbers I provided to you are up to date.
Okay.
I hate, I hate to not at least give it a try, because I meant the people in this city, we all, we all know, we all, whether we pay a little, a little bit of property tax, we still pay to keep that pool open, and to not even give it a try is kind of a, doesn't sit well on my stomach. I know that we can only give it so much try, I mean, if we can't get enough applicants, then what are we to do? But I think we should at least give it, give it a try.
Give what a try, exactly.
Give, give the three a try, and see if we can get a fourth, and see if we can get a fifth, and we can start building upon that. I mean, if we can only get three, then we can only open one day a week, conceivably.
But we could maybe get three certified because it requires, what's the three that, a minimum of three?
So we have four currently that are scheduled to come on Saturday, so I'm hoping that they do show up on Saturday morning to the training.
Right.
And so if they all four, you know, if everything goes well and all four pass, that would be great, because we could at least do a modified schedule.
Try, I meant.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say, is at least give it a try.
I would agree with that.
And we could keep advertising and.
And if we, if we only end up with two, then we can only, we can only operate, what?
We would have to limit, we could do the lap swim in the mornings, and then the afternoons for recreation swim, we would have to cap it at 50.
Yeah.
We do have to have someone managing the office, I don't think I mentioned that, but we do have, hopefully, one of our full-time staff members is due to return soon, and so we've talked it internally, we would designate that staff member to go do the check-in process, and then that should take care of like the cashier, and then you could have the lifeguards focus on lifeguarding.
And it could just be as, we could stay open as we, if we don't have enough for one day, we're closed. I meant, I, I don't know how else we could do it.
One question I, I had for you also to consider, would you be open if we tried to, because I know in the past, we've allowed residents to just come by whenever, and so, and pay there at the check-in. What does council feel if we were to do pre-registration, so that at least we know?
We know we have 25 or whatever.
Correct, and especially because of how if we're gonna have only, for example, two lifeguards, and we're limiting it to 50, right? So it would be first come, first served, if we were to have it a very quick process where you pay in advance, and we know on this day, for sure, we'll have 50 residents doing rec swim, and we have all eight lanes of the pool rented for, in the morning, for lap swim.
I can see where, it'd be work for staff, and you know, tracking that, but it might be less work overall.
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't have to keep juggling, okay, which, how many lifeguards do we need today, you know, depending on, yeah, I, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And if we, if like I said, if we only end up one day a week, or two days a week, whatever we end up, we end up, we open. If we're closed, we're closed, I mean.
Well. Yes, Councilmember Viasenior?
Thanks. So follow-up question to that, and it's okay, we don't have the answer, but if it were pre-registration, would, would it be something like, please register by close, like, for the following weeks? Let's say, okay, I'm gonna go, I want to go lap swimming Tuesday and Thursday next week, but would you say I want to, I need to let the city know by the, you know, Friday morning, or Friday at noon before? Just curious, so I could like sort of start spreading the word and letting people know that, like, how much advance notice do you, do you want staff to make it as smooth as possible?
I think if it's just a day or two prior, it should be fine, because there's a way I could probably cap it, using an app, where once it hits the 50, you're done, and then it's just more of a self-service.
Okay.
And then it should be easy enough where I could just download it into Excel.
I think if, either way, going down that path obviously requires a lot of communication, absent even that, that form for the modified schedule, with the potential, with limited staff, over-communication of that potential, I think is gonna be important with not just the public perception, but then also satisfaction with the services that, that we're trying to render. It is important for us, obviously, not to spend more money than we need to, to keep the pool open, but obviously, that with limited staffing, that would, that makes it more, more of a challenge, and it's gonna be a challenge for you and whoever else gets delegated this task. But I would encourage you to over-communicate early with, hopefully, maybe even a separate landing page for the season on the website, where it's just very clear about what kind of, what, what the schedule looks like and what the procedures are, and then hopefully, we can get rid of that sooner rather than later. But I, I would also like just to see that other option for training explored, with the hope that we can get some more applicants, now that it's very obvious to the public that we already are looking at a limited season, limited hours for the season.
Yeah, I would concur with you that we start, we start, to start that process now for next year.
Okay. So you would like for us to put an RFP out there, just to clarify?
I didn't say that, but I would also like to see that in the future.
I'm sorry, to see what, I missed that part.
The, the, yeah, the RFP for a contract to operate.
For the operations of our season.
You mean the lifeguard positions?
Yeah, so we can, we won't run into this next.
Right, but what I'm thinking too, is that I think we need to also continue down the road of looking at operators, other agencies, that might be out there, and be ready, because I don't, I don't want to see us going down this road every year, where it gets more difficult, and I think it has, at least my experience in sitting here. Every year gets more and more difficult to maintain, to staff, to regulate, and so, anyway, that's, I think we need to continue, include that in the ongoing process here between now and next year, and that's to continue to try to locate operators, and at least anybody that might be interested, so.
Will do. Then I, hopefully, we'll know by, we should know by Monday, May 6th, how many lifeguards we will have certified, because that will be after their last day of training. And so on that day, we could release an actual schedule of how it would look, based on the number of lifeguards. The other thing too, that I was thinking is, you don't want to, like, hire the, the employees, and then be like, well, you know, today you have eight hours, but tomorrow you're not gonna come. Because that also starts to create that, like, you know, and not stability for the worker, and they can't really plan, and so that's something that we probably need to account when we're building the schedule as well.
Right, they need some continuity, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so do we actually even need a motion on this, Tiffany? No, okay. So if there aren't any other questions, then comments?
I have enough direction to move forward, so thank you very much.
Okay, you're good. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to 9H, this is approved, the 2024-25 agreement with Fillmore Unified School District to fund two school resource officers, and we're gonna turn it over to our police chief, Eduardo Malgon.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff, community members as well. I'm talking a little bit today about SRO, so as you guys well know, we have currently two school resource officers here in the city of Fillmore. One of those school resource officers, the funding for it is, is shared equally between the partnership between the city and the, and the Fillmore Unified School District. The second SRO position was created in early 2020, after the Fillmore Unified School District got a grant from the Department of Justice. That grant was a three-year grant, and the school board at the time accepted it. The board supervisors approved funding that position, or allocating that extra position here in the, in the, in Fillmore. At the time, there was an agreement between the Fillmore Unified School District and the city to fund that, that SRO position. The grant has since expired, and the Fillmore Unified School District has requested a one-year extension of the second SRO position. Under the proposed new agreement, the Fillmore Unified School District would continue to pay all costs associated with this, the position, utilizing district local control accountability, accountability, accountability plan, LCAP funding, excuse me, and the cost of this position would continue to be billed to the city of Fillmore monthly, for, for police services billing statement from the county. Because the city contracts with the sheriff's office for police services with the city, the city will need to agree to extend the term of the second SRO until June 30th, 2025. If the city did so, the Fillmore Unified School District would be responsible for the annual cost to fully fund the second SRO. Fillmore Unified School District will be billed for the SRO monthly during the entirety of the extension period. Accordingly, the cost of the second SRO would pass, would be a pass-through on the sheriff's office bill to the city, to be paid by the Fillmore Unified School District. There is no additional fiscal impact to the city if this passes, or if you guys agree to this, the second SRO will remain a pass-through cost, wherein the Fillmore Unified School District pays for the entire cost of that second SRO position. So tonight, the recommendation is that the city council approve the agreement, an agreement with the Fillmore Unified School District, for the continuation of two deputy sheriff positions in the city's exist, existing police services contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, to serve as school resource officers for the fiscal year 2024-25. And I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Turn it over to council.
One question I have is, I mean, obviously, the, the primary duties for the SROs are at the schools, but they are also able to respond to certain calls. Would you be able to characterize roughly kind of what percentage of calls they, they respond to, or is it just by pure opportunity?
Yeah, they, they, they are what we call a force multiplier, right? Both for, for the schools and actually for any patrol service out in the city. I don't have a percentage per se, and, and we don't like to pull them from their duties from the, you know, from the schools for obvious reasons, but they are able to respond for emergencies in the city, and they do that, you know, periodically from time to time, as calls for service come up. And vice versa, the city units respond to the school, be a force multiplier for, you know, for anything that happens at the school, so, and they do that pretty often, actually.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything from you, Christina?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chief. So my question is, sort of like other, well, you just mentioned it, we don't like to pull them away from school unless, unless, you know, needed, but also, is there some role that the SROs have in the larger community, or sort of contributing on different task force or meetings, just to, to be in touch with like, you know, the folks who work with in behavioral health department, or crisis response, just kind of, if you could just give us a little bit more of an overview of any kind of, how they act maybe as a liaison to, to sort of relay information both from Fillmore to what, you know, to let others know in the county what's going on here, and then bring resources, resources or things that are available to, to seal students and families back to Fillmore.
Yeah, they're, they're not assigned to any, a task force specifically, but they do meet regularly with other school administrators and school resource officers from other jurisdictions in the county, with, you know, through the Office of Education. And so I think a lot of the information does get relayed through them, I mean, they're pretty active with schools and, and the school administrators. As far as with our administration, actually, too, at the station, I mean, they're, they're pretty involved with everything that we do at the station level, with, you know, backpack medicine, so they're in the loop as to all the, all the different things that are going on. I'm not sure if that kind of a little bit answered your question?
Yeah, it does. It just kind of it sort of says that they they are connected, you know, they are community-connected and they are connected to the administration.
Yeah, just because they're at the school doesn't necessarily mean that they're not, you know, that they're like in their own little world, so to speak. I mean, they they still go to regular training like they're supposed to through our agency. In fact, they have monthly trainings with the school resource officers from other jurisdictions within our 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 county. So they get case law updates through our district attorney's office pretty regularly. They get extra range time at our at our range facility. And all that, you know, obviously, all that translates to, you know, what they do on the job. And so they actually use a lot of that stuff to provide training to the school staff as far as an active shooter or active assailant type trainings. So they do stay involved and up to date on 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 sort of, you know, everything else that's going on outside of the school that kind of relates to the school, if you will.
Perfect, that helps, Dave. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then may I have a motion, please?
I'll move that the city council approved an agreement with Fillmore Unified School District for the continuation of two deputy sheriff positions in the city, existing police services contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office to serve as school resource officers for fiscal year 2024-2025.
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, this agenda item passes. Okay, so moving on to item nine I. Initiation of proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for landscape and lighting district number zero two and Heritage Valley Landscape and Lighting District 2007 dash one. And there will be some abstentions when it comes to voting on this because some of us live in these districts. But we'll deal with that when we get to the voting aspect of it, so.
Yeah, I need to recoup myself with the next items.
And the rest, we only need to abstain from voting on those designate which districts we're abstaining from, yeah, okay.
We're the only ones that aren't in the districts, yeah.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Brogie. I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item nine I. Has staff requesting the city council initiate annual proceedings and the review of the FY 2425 proposed assessments for the city's landscape and lighting assessment districts? In order for the city to proceed, the city council must also approve the preliminary annual engineers report, adopt the attached six resolutions, and set a public hearing date for May fourteenth, 2024. As stated in the staff report, the city has two landscaping and lighting districts. And they are landing district number two and the Heritage Valley Landscape District 2007 dash one. These districts contain landscape improvements and designated medians, partways, et cetera, and street lighting improvements. Within these designated zones are located in residential, commercial, and mixed-use areas. The annual assessments fund the operations, administration, utilities, and maintenance of improvements. The assessments calculation include an annual inflationary adjustment factor so that the maximum assessment can be increased without being considered an increased assessment. It either is either by three percent or the annual percentage increase in the consumer price index. The CPI is a consumer price index. Annual percentage difference, how it goes, is you the CPI from January of this year over versus the January of the prior year. And in this year, it increased by 2.53%. Therefore, the prior year's maximum assessment that rates that can be established will be adjusted by three percent. This item meets the goals for infrastructure. And this is the end of my presentation and available for questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council?
Just to clarify, we're only looking at the CPI increase, correct?
Yes, it'll be a sorry, it is the three percent because it is a greater.
Up to three.
Yes.
All right, so.
Do we have to do we have to state the resolution numbers on all of them? Or can we just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
You can just do that with you only have to say the whole name if it's an ordinance.
Okay, I'm just saying we can just make a motion to enter to enter. Okay, I make a motion to adopt item number one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay, and before.
We should have we should get a second and then.
Right, okay, let's.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, though, let's indicate which districts we're abstaining our vote from.
Okay, so abstaining from landscape and lighting district 2007 dash one, zone one.
Christina?
My in my vote, I'm abstaining from landscape and lighting district number two, Riverwalk Track 1599.
Okay, and I'm abstaining from the LLD 2007 dash one and zone one.
I'm not abstaining.
Pardon?
He's he's not abstaining.
Okay, all right. With that said, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, this motion passes. Which takes us to nine J. Review of the engineers' report regarding the proposed increase in assessments for the city of Fillmore Storm Drain Maintenance Districts and adoption of the resolution to initiate the proceedings and the intent to levy the annual assessments and setting of a public hearing date to consider this proposal. Turn it over to our finance director.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Brogie. I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item nine J has staff recommending that the city council adopt a resolution number 243998, declaring its intention to levy the annual assessment, approve the preliminary annual engineers' report for fiscal year 2024-25, and set the public hearing for May fourteenth, 2024 to receive public comments on the proposed assessments. As stated in the staff report, the city has seven storm drain maintenance districts. The annual assessments pay for the maintenance and operation costs related to the storm drain facilities and storm water pollution treatment systems available, utilized, or associated with the prostheses within these districts. These facilities include retention basins, biofilter areas, and catch basin basins. The annual assessment includes a maintenance and servicing also of levies adjacent to the district properties. As with the previous one, the calculation is includes an annual inflationary adjustment either by three percent or CPI, whichever is higher. In this case, as with the prior, the percentage from January of this year versus January of prior year was increased by 2.53%. Therefore, the higher, which will be the three percent, was adjusted for the maximum assessment allowed without, again, being considered an increased assessment. This meets the city's council's goal for infrastructure. This is the end of my presentation and available for questions.
Okay, council, questions, comments?
I believe it was this portion of the staff report that spoke a little bit more specifically to a projected deficit of or negative balance of about $20,000. Would anyone from staff be able to speak towards that?
Yes, so this here is the hometown tract that we are projecting. Again, it's a projection. We have not closed, actually, we haven't closed out 2024 as of yet. And we're still working on the effort 23 maybe adjustments. And it's really related to more the biofilter filtering system. So looking at other ways that we could manage this would be either to avoid a we can do a public hearing, which would be the Prop 218. But of course, with that size, I believe that if I remember correctly, I had the size there. There was the number of people that would be in there was 175. And of course, you would need the majority to I think is 51 vote to get in. There's also a possibility to, you know, staff is looking at ways to reduce the cost of the operation. But again, with its filtration areas, usually that is not our cost. That is an outside associated item. Also, if we can look at possibly general fund support, other areas, do you do that as well? But I'm I'm looking at this again, see where we go with this other adjustments or looking at our closeout for this year to really see where we are standing on this item.
Yeah, I think I would support the idea of potentially other funds being moved to cover that that gap. I don't know if ARPA would fit that bill, but at least from the general fund, like we've been in a pretty healthy financial status for a while. And I think that usually lends towards the ability to cover those unexpected costs whilst, you know, meeting our goals of actually, you know, doing the work that needs to be done so that we don't have to create a potential long-term increase that could go down over time. You know, I think a lot of the increases that we've seen as of late are driven a lot by cost of oil and delivering products just around the world. And so changes can easily happen. And if we lock in, you know, these increases, then the local residents might not see the benefit of that with decreased costs in the future. So I'm just a little concerned about driving up or making an increase that might not go away where we could seems very easily covered based on some of the expenses that we've seen with with recent projects. Does that make sense?
Yeah, specifically, what numbers on where are you looking?
Especially the the gap of about 20,792.
Maybe the district three.
Right. To avoid the prop to avoid the Prop 218 hearing, correct?
Because this is now at it, yes, this is now at its max. So we're at our maximum rate for this particular case. So if you do anything above that, that would start the hearing process.
Right.
Okay, well, with that said, any other comments?
I guess I would make the proposed recommendation with the the amendment to say to seek general fund or any other fund availability to cover that gap.
I would be hesitant to. I was going to say she's wait, she's still working on it. So I would wait till she's done working on it, then we can make a call on what we're going to do with that. Because.
That's fine.
We don't, we don't.
Well, yeah, that's just the direction to direction to her to 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 seek to seek that.
But I meant that would be another agenda item that would come back to us anyway. I meant if we're going to go that route.
Presumably, that's not the way that I saw it, but I thought I saw it as something now.
Yeah, there'll be a public hearing where you'll actually set the rates. And at that time, she might have more information, but it might be later than that. It might just be part of the budget adjustments that come periodically.
So purposes of this agenda item, we can pass it as is?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and again, this is another item where there'll be some abstentions on certain districts by three of us on council. So as you cast your vote, get your name, please indicate where you're abstaining. So I have a, do I have a motion?
No, he's going to make the motion right now.
Okay. Oh, Albert, keep it going. Sorry, I already got my my mic on, okay.
Make a motion to adopt items number one and two.
Was that your official motion?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, and please note your abstention.
Okay, I'll abstain from Stormwater District number seven, zone C.
Christina?
I'll vote yes with abstention on district number four, Riverwalk.
And I am abstaining from, I can't read my writing, 7D, number seven, zone C. So with that said, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing then, this agenda item passes. Thank you very much. Okay. So that concludes that portion of our agenda. And we can get Dave, Dave back in? Oh, okay. So moving on to item number 10, committee, commission, and board reports. This is for council to report on any committees that you've attended, commissions, any boards?
Mayor, if I may, I actually have a request to see if I could get coverage for upcoming meeting. The Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance is having an energy champions meeting on, what my calendar, May 16th, Thursday. I think it's at 10:30 in the morning. It's not an official board meeting. Mayor, I think you're my alternate to the official VCREA, but it's not an official meeting. It's it's got changed to call it an energy champions meeting. They usually talk about do sort of a round take, round robin discussion of the latest is going on around energy. So just putting out to any of my colleagues, I'll be, the reason I can't make it is I'll be at the JPIA conference in Huntington Beach through that Thursday. I think I'm there the 14th through the 16th.
Right, and I did check my calendar and I am not available to cover that.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to see if any other council members may be available. If not, again, it's not a not a requirement.
Yeah, I'm also unavailable that day.
Okay.
Okay, Christina, any other reports?
Nope.
Any reports from other council? Okay, then moving on to item number 11, city manager verbal report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Couple items tonight. Number one, Earth Day celebration for the city will be Saturday, April 27th at Central Plaza, Central Plaza Park here next to City Hall from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The event will feature a number of vendors offering eco-friendly products and recycling and recycling information. And partner agencies like Ventura County will be here as well to share in Earth Day celebrations. Also, story in the month of May, we're going to have the advanced meter installations going around the city. Residents will be notified 72 hours prior to or a week prior to your meters being installed. You don't need to be home to have this take place. There's no cost to you. It's not going to raise your rates at all. Actually, this is going to help you control and monitor your water usage once this is implemented. It was a benefit to both the homeowner and to the city. If you have any questions, please call Keystone Utility Systems at 877-587-2279. In addition, we will have information up on our website. We've also sent out information on our social media in both English and Spanish. And we will keep reminding our residents about this as well as this will be upcoming. And then finally, I would like to ask Lalo to come up and talk about a couple items that were taking place this last week with solicitors going door to door and also in terms of seniors with some scamming issues.
While he's getting up, what was the date of the AMI updates?
I can answer that. They're actually going to start prepping for the installation. So May first, they're going to be just vacuuming the area. And then subsequent to that, they'll be scheduling the replacements of the meter. But it's going to take a few months. So we're anticipating from May through September. And information's already up on the website. And there will be a mailer sent out to every water account as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know what parts of the city they're going to be doing first?
I don't have the actual schedule, but I can find out.
Good evening again, mayors, council. It's been a long night. I know everyone wants to leave, so I'll cut it pretty short today. But on April 19th and 20th, we had several calls for service in the city reference solicitors that were going around town trying to sell, you know, filtration systems. And, you know, they were kind of pushy and scaring our residents, if you will. So we had a few calls for service for that. Our deputies did go out there and eventually did contact some of the employees and identified them as working for a company called California Efficiency Group. And let me just say that before I go on, the city did a great job with addressing that and putting out stuff on social media right away, you know, you know, alerting customer or residents that they were not part of the city, not to let them in their house and to call, you know, the sheriff's office if if they ran into them. But anyways, the employee. But anyways, the, the employee, the workers were contacted, and they were advised that they were not allowed to solicit in the city without a, a, a permit, which they didn't have, they were cooperative, and eventually all left. We did a little bit of follow-up, and the company, for the most part, seems like to, seems to be a legitimate business. I mean, they got a website with, you know, where they advertise what it is they're selling. I, I called the, the customer support number earlier this morning, spoke to a lady, kind of expressed our concerns, asked for a manager to call me back, and I'm, and I'm still waiting on that. So I'm not gonna hold my breath on that, be honest with you. We did a little bit of research, my sergeant and I, on, through the Better Business Bureau, and we found that they have quite a few complaints, and they're essentially the same complaints that our, our members here were, were, were dealing with, right? They're really pushy, they're trying to sell these filtration systems, they're trying to get, push your way in your house, so I, I don't, their business might be legit, but they don't use the best tactics to sell their product, so hopefully they don't come back. But we're gonna, we're gonna keep following up on that. I know Oxnard had similar incidents, we're waiting on a callback from them to see if it's the same company or not, but we're hoping that they don't come back. There is a, there is a, there is a peanut quote section that, that, that deals specifically with people impersonating public employees, like in this case, so we'll obviously explore that, that case if these vendors do come back, so we can take appropriate action. But outside of that, if they wanna do, you know, business legit here in the city, they obviously have to go through the city and get the appropriate permits for, for their soliciting. As far as for the community members, I would just continue to advise them, like the, the city did earlier this week, is call us, do not let them in your house, you're, you're not, I mean, I wouldn't let anybody in my house that I don't know. And not that they did it this time around, but definitely do not provide them any kind of identifying information, your driver's license numbers, social security numbers, and things like that, because that, that all leads to, you know, much bigger problems that we don't want our, our community members to, to go through. And then lastly, just on the scam stuff, a couple days ago, we put out a new story, reference just identity theft problems and community awareness for fraud cases that came up through, because we haven't, we had an incident, and once too many, but we had an incident where an elderly couple in the community did lose quite a bit of money to a financial scam. So I encourage our community members to read that press release, kind of familiarize themselves with the scams that people are pulling, whether it be by phone or in person, so you can really protect your, you know, your assets and not fall, fall victims to, to any impersonators. And again, like was in this case, do not volunteer any personal information over the phone or in person to people you don't know, verify the, the information. And, you know, when you're, when you're in doubt, call, call the cops, we'll figure it out. If there's, if there's a crime, we'll address it, but at minimum, just protect yourself and call us so that you don't give, you don't fall victim to these crimes. So that's all I got, unless you got something else to?
Thank you, Lalo.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that takes to our closed session. We have one lit, closed session on litigation and one regarding labor negotiations. So the council will now go to closed session, and then we turn to the dais here to close out the meeting after we're through with closed session. So thank you.
Are we ready?
Christine's back.
Are we good?
You didn't have to read it.
No, when's our next meeting?
November 16th.
It's 14th, May 14th.
May 14th, okay. All right. We are going to adjourn our city council meeting this evening, and we will be meeting again on May 14th at 6:30 p.m. here at Chambers. Thank you.